Yes?
Yes.
The other one, I was going to announce that I've got a young man shadowing me today, but I don't see him.[16.02][16.02](Laughter). He's a shadow after all.[20.14][20.14](Laughter). No, I didn't mean it like that.[22.48][22.48](Laughter). Yeah, so, oh, well, and is he walking in right now? Is Nick with you?
He's on his way.
Well, I've just announced him, so, all right. Well, we'll get to that later.[34.11][34.11](Laughter). He's, I'll describe when he gets in. All right, so, we're going to go ahead and get started with item number one, which is related to the dog warden. I do have three speakers cards related to this issue, but Jeff, I was hoping that you could give us an overview, because at the last meeting where we talked about this issue, we asked a number of questions, all three of us, and so John Bruin has responded to the questions we asked, and we've got that report in front of us. And for those of you that are interested, I know some of the folks already have it with them, but the report I'm referring to is back on the table with some of those responses. So if you could kind of give us an overview of that and kind of a status report, and then we'll move to the speakers cards. Oh, and very quickly, Nick Watts has entered the room, man of the hour. So Nick Watts is going to be a freshman in high school. I met Nick at a festival last weekend, and he asked if he could shadow, and I'm like, well, yes, because how often do we get to ask that? So, anyway, he's with me until the end of the meeting. So I hope it's informative, Nick. Welcome. We're glad you're here. So with that, Jeff, if you could lead us in the dog warden conversation.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yeah, so, not a whole lot to report today, just as you framed it, Madam President, we continue to discuss the prospects of either the sheriff, the SPCA, or alternatively, the internalization of the dog warden function as a county function, and what that would mean in terms of both the performance of the Ohio Revised Code required, requirements of counties as it relates to the management of strays and licensing, as well as what that would mean for the humane functions that are typically managed by the SPCA under all three of those options. So, the board had asked a couple, as you indicated, a couple of questions, I think, at the meeting prior to last. The first was to receive some information on kind of a side-by-side comparison of the different costs related to either the current approach in terms of the SPCA's management of the function through a contract, which is on your sheet that shows the dog warden operating options. There's option A, B, and C. Option A would be approaching it in the current manner. Option B would be the sheriff assuming control, and option C would be the county establishing an office. So this does a good job of laying out the options on a side-by-side basis, showing cost. It's less capable, as a comparison, it's less capable of showing levels of service related to this. So, and John is currently out of the office, but when he's back, I want to dig in with John in terms of how we show in this side-by-side comparison what the costs mean as it relates to the provision of service. It's one thing to show a total annual budget, it's another thing to show how many hours of service on the street does that get you. What does that mean in terms of the capacity of that individual option to carry out the duties of the proposed function? So we need to dig in on that a little bit, but nevertheless, the board had asked for that, so we wanted to make sure you were provided with that. We also have a report for you on an analysis, I believe Commissioner Portune had asked a question about shared services and the ability to potentially look at shared services as it relates to kenneling with some of our surrounding counties. I've had an offline conversation with Commissioner Portune after he reviewed this, but essentially, the conclusion of this analysis is that it might be very difficult, given the logistics of the surrounding counties in terms of where their current kennels are located, also as it relates to the transportation of strays up to a centrally-located facility. Perhaps not something to discount altogether, but there are some major challenges and headwinds to looking at that. Thirdly, there is a memo from the Budget Office related to concepts and ideas for increasing dog license sales. Some of these mesh with some ideas I know that have spurred from Commissioner Summer Dumas's office in terms of looking at private vendors and their ability to assist with the expansion of license sales, obviously working through the auditor's office on that. But there's a memo for you here on that. And finally, there was a question about the sheriff's specific proposal, and wanting to make sure that the board had received that. That is here in front of you as well. I spoke with Chief Schoonover earlier to confirm that he was fine with that being publicly available today, so he said certainly, by all means, it is. So I know we had some copies on the back table. If we run out, if there's others that want it, we're happy to provide the sheriff's proposal as well. So again, we continue conversations with the SPCA and the sheriff on this. I'd recommend that we schedule this again for a follow-up conversation to do more global deliberation on this, so we can start to enter into an option, and the administration at least can get some direction on doing, on one of these specific options as we look towards the 2020 budget.
Okay, thank you. I have just one quick question before we get to the speakers cards. When it comes to the license sales, and this is a pretty exhaustive report about, you know, how to go about doing that, what the options look like, can you just help me better understand, you know, what is the benefit to a dog owner to having licensed their dog?
Well, I, this may be a, I know we have representatives from the SPCA here, it may be a better question for them. I'd like to defer that if I could.
All right. Then I, Jake, I'm going to ask you that when you come up.
I think Jake or Brandon might want to probably speak to that more comprehensively. Aside from the intuitive benefits of being able to locate your dog and that type of thing if it's lost, et cetera, but if Jake or Brandon.
Well, I'm going to defer my question then until someone comes forward. Any other questions before we get started on the speakers cards?
I have no questions.
All right, well, the first speakers card is Jake White, so, come on up. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes, and do not feel compelled to answer my question in that two minutes, I'll just ask you after.
Okay. Madam President?
Yep.
Commissioners, staff, thank you for allowing me the time to be able to speak on behalf of the SPCA Cincinnati's 2020 Dog Warden Contract. After many years of service to the community through the Dog Warden Contract, the SPCA Board of Trustees voted and approved a resolution to end the partnership with Hamilton County for the duties of and associated with the Hamilton County Dog Warden Contract beginning in 2020. My duty as SPCA Cincinnati CEO is to create an exit strategy focused on a smooth transition so no stray dog is at additional risk or peril during that transition, and to finalize the SPCA Cincinnati's responsibility for Hamilton County dog registration and licensing. After several discussions, our best solution and offer to Hamilton County remains the same. We sell our turnkey operation on coal rain for an agreed-upon negotiated price within a timeframe agreeable to both partners of the current contract, meaning Hamilton County and the SPCA Cincinnati. As in the past, during and after the transition, the SPCA Cincinnati will remain a Humane Society Agency with humane agents authorized under Ohio Revised Code. Please allow me to emphasize yet again, our intention is to work amicably through this transition so all the stray dogs in Hamilton County are cared for appropriately and with the best care. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, to your question, that selling a dog license fulfills the requirement that is created by law that the dogs are licensed. It is for tracking purposes, so that we can do that, so we can have a history of the animals, that's through county. It's also revenue generator for the county. I'll let you know that as an organization that sells the licenses, we only generate 75 cents profit, and if the individual buying the license uses a credit card, the fees cut into our profit as well, so many times we are break even.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Madam President. You indicated ending the partnership, could you give me the date again?
There is, and that's the transitional part. They voted to end the contract. My job is to have a transitional period, whatever that is, be it January 1st of 2020 or December 31st, 2020. We want a smooth transition, because again, we're dealing with souls here, we're dealing with dogs, but we have to do it within the framework of the law. Contract ends, we can't hold the dogs. That's just law, we can't do that. So let's work together to be able to figure this out, so that there is a smooth transition. We do want to work together. And again, I mentioned, and I know John has mentioned before, some of the conversations that we had about what the replacement value that we pay for insurance and the costs and all that is, we are negotiable. Let's get together and talk about this. We need to remain partners through this entire process, because we serve the same target population, and we want to make sure that we're taking care of them.
And just finally, the decision to end the partnership was made because of why? What was the reasoning behind that?
Actually, believe it or not, that decision was made back in 2013, and it was voted unanimously by the Board of Trustees at that time to be able to separate, and my predecessor was tasked with doing that transitional phase at some point in the future. That point in the future has come at a most recent board meeting, it was brought up again, and they reaffirmed the fact that they are ending the contract.
Okay, and I thought it was finally, but in 2013, when it was decided, what was, what were the circumstances of that decision?
I wasn't here at that time, I'm sorry. I just read in the, yeah, I just read in the minutes that they decided to make that transitional change.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, so that's a new wrinkle for the board to contemplate, and I'm not prepared to ask any questions about it right now, so thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Beth Sheehan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Beth Sheehan, a Hamilton County voter and taxpayer. So how does the SPCA stack up against another Ohio Animal Control Agency? Let's look at the Cleveland Animal Care and Control and the SPCA in 2018. Commissioners, Cleveland, with about half the population of Hamilton County, took in almost double the animals at 2/3 of the cost. Cleveland, if you look down on the bullets, responds to all dog calls, nuisance, dangerous, vicious, and nuisance wildlife, in addition to the next three bullets. The SPCA picks up stray dogs. Cleveland retains just $1 for every dog tag sold. SPCA gets $19 minus the auditor's fee for each dog tag sold. Cleveland gets no money from the Dog and Kennel Fund. SPCA does get money from the Dog and Kennel Fund, but because of insufficient funds in the last years, $1 million has been moved from the general fund to the Dog and Kennel Fund in each of the last four years. Cleveland has limited humane services, SPCA Dog Warden has no humane services. Cleveland enforces tethering and extreme weather ordinances. The SPCA does not enforce the six tethering and weather ordinances that are in effect in Hamilton County. The SPCA has had 15 years, 50 years to get this right, and this is the result. In 2018, Cleveland, with half the population of Hamilton County, took in twice as many animals at 2/3 of the cost. I strongly urge you to hire Sheriff Jim Neal for the Hamilton County 2020 Dog Warden to move Hamilton County forward in greater accountability and improved solvency.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth, for taking the time to do this.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kathy Hartung.
Hi. Hi, my name is Catherine Hartung, and I am an animal advocate for Butler County. I have brought up several issues to the Commissioners in the past via email regarding the SPCA's 501(c)(3) and lack of transparency, the IRS forms 990, the salaries, the tri-county area, live release rates, things like that. But today, I simply want to just propose yet another option. With the SPCA refusing to work with the Sheriff's Department, and we all well know that the Humane Society cannot enforce the laws the way the sheriff can, because we've already went all over that, what if you didn't, what if you didn't even contract with the SPCA for 2020 at all? Yeah, I know. Have you considered that even without your contract, the SPCA would still continue to operate? It would still continue to accept strays and pick up animals, because its revenue is not based on its contract alone, but on its adoption fees, donations, and trusts? I would guarantee the SPCA would remain afloat for 2020. What if the Hamilton County Sheriff took the Dog Warden Contract, and you visited the idea of using a shelter or two outside of Hamilton County for 2020 and possibly a few years thereafter, kind of what you had mentioned before? Chances are, you may not have a $1.8 million contract, but instead of 1.4, even less, which includes the sheriff's $800,000 for 2020. I previously emailed a small list of shelters used in each county when explaining the live rates, but there are others that may consider working with Hamilton County as it transitions from SPCA. I know for a fact the Humane Society, or Humane Association of Warren County, had made a post on social media in regards to additional space and available to assist local shelters and rescues. Honestly, if I had $1.8 million laying on the line, I would have been here at every meeting to answer any of your questions, regardless if I were told to be here or not. I mean, if we're here for free, I mean, we're here for free, so we know what's at stake here at Hamilton County, and your decision is that important to us.
Thank you. All right.
Madam President, I'm sorry. So, just a brief follow-up comment as it relates to moving forward from here. So while I, you know, I don't think the board or the administration was aware that there was going to be a specific statement from the SPCA on this matter today as it relates to ending the partnership, we were aware that there were some conversations amongst the SPCA Board towards this, in this regard, which is one of the reasons why the Budget Office has been looking very diligently at the other two options that are here in front of you. So I don't have much of a concern at this point that over the course of a transition, presuming that the SPCA states, as Mr. White indicated, that they are committed to a smooth transition, we have, I think we have some deliberation to do in terms of which route to go, but there are other models and other routes to pursue, presuming that both the SPCA and whether it's the sheriff or an internalized dog warden function all work cooperatively towards the mandated and the humane aspects of the dog warden function. So I'm confident that still by later this year, early fall, we'd be able to come back to the board with a recommendation that moves this function forward in a productive manner in 2020, presuming we are able to work in a good manner with the SPCA on a transition.
Thank you, thank you for that. All right, well, thank you all for being here. We've got some work to do, so I'm hopeful that we will be able to wrap this up with one or two at the most more meetings, because we've gotten updates related to this. I feel like we've got the information that we need, at least I do, at this point, so hopefully we can start to wrap this up within the next month or two, and expecting a transition with the SPCA and whoever else the partners are.
Madam President, I'm also very confident that we will work through this, that we've, as Jeff has said, we've been looking at alternatives and transitions, and so we just have to move a little quicker possibly, but also, as you were saying, have a smooth transition. So I'm very confident, as we have already been looking at other alternatives, that we'll do just fine.
Thank you. All right, thank you all for being here. Thank you. All right, the next item is the MSD Customer Assistance Program update. This is something, it's been a joint venture really between the city and the county, to provide some relief for people when it comes to their sewer bills, particularly the elderly population that qualify for the homestead exemption, and so the program has rolled out, and I know Diana, you'll give us an update as far as the timing, but I did attend a forum yesterday down in South Fairmount where they were promoting the program, because we want as many seniors that qualify to sign up for the program to get the relief from the program on their sewer bills. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Interim Director Diana Christie.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner, and good afternoon, Commissioners and Administration. I did just want to quickly recap the cap, recap the cap. The Customer Assistance Program, we've been calling it the CAP, that was approved by the board in the spring. Just to remind everyone the eligibility requirements, and then today I was going to provide with information about what we've been doing in terms of outreach and implementing the program. The rate did become effective as of August 1, according to the legislation that was passed by the board. So just as a quick reminder, the program that was established is based on what we are permitted as a county sewer district by law to provide a discounted rate to seniors who are age 65 and older. They need to meet a low-income requirement that is provided by statute as well. We did apply the homestead exemption as our criteria, which requires property ownership and that the income of the household meets the threshold established, and it's $32,800 for 2019. That rate will be established again for 2019 by statute. And other, just to kind of point out what this really equates to in savings, you know, basically, most of the seniors that would be eligible are going to have our smallest water meter size, which is how we do our billing, so that's the 5/8s. They could also potentially have a 3/4-inch meter size. So what this shows you on the top row there is just what we would determine to be the average annual savings for a 25% reduction for a senior that qualifies, and that's just based on the minimum base charge of 3CCF. So as you can see, it's about $120 a year, which is, you know, a sizable amount for people that are on limited income, and then there's just a little breakdown there in terms of the minimum charge and the commodity charge depending on their water meter size. So that just gives you an idea of what the actual savings are on the program that was approved. So what we've been doing since the Commissioners approved the program, we have, of course, we had to develop the materials and the marketing, get information on our website, and work with the billing entities, so that's for a large portion of our district, is Greater Cincinnati Water Works, to do the actual changes of the rates once we had approved people, and then a few of the outlined jurisdictions as well. So we worked on that once it was approved, and we put together materials, and then we really had a multi-targeted approach in terms of outreach. This is where, as you can see on the right, this, I provided a handout to you, it's at the back of your packet, because it's kind of hard to read on the slide, and this just shows you some of the key contacts and efforts that we've made in our outreach program. So generally speaking, we needed to get to our MSD customers, and the ways we've been doing that is with information on our website. We have just, as of the August bills, we have a information on the waterworks bill that you receive if you are in the Greater Cincinnati Water Works billing area, and then we also, and we have a dedicated phone number. We've then reached out and provided materials and information to really every other jurisdiction in Hamilton County and in our service area, so cities, townships. We've gone to a few community meetings, and we're, you know, kind of continuing to try to get out and to actual events, because I feel like the in-person communication is really effective. We did have some radio and TV ads, and then generally, just really partnering with the social services agencies to provide materials for them. As you can see on that, and for those who are looking on the board, on the right side, again, it's hard to read, but we kind of, we did some of the preliminary stuff, and then we really rolled this out at the end of June. So June 26, we had a blitz, we put out as much information as we could on that date. And what that equated to was, as you'll see in a few minutes, is a lot of applications and calls coming in throughout the month of July. And these are just some of the images and examples of what we have. So this page is our application. We tried to keep it as simple, straightforward, and legible as possible, given our target audience, so there's really not a lot of extra information on here. If you've received the printed version, it has, it's really just a one-page folded brochure, and it provides, you know, information for mailing it back to us, and then the one-page application, it just, you know, we have people submit the paperwork documentation, but there's not a lot to do to apply. These are just other things that are on our website on this slide, and then you can see here what the actual bill would look like. So the mock-up on, that's provided here, shows that we're providing, if you're approved, it'll show on your bill as a 25% discount, so that's just helpful, so people know that they're getting it once they've been approved. And then, like I said, as of this month, August, folks are receiving their bills in the mail, do get a little bill-oncert ad right there on the page with the amount due. And then this is just some of the webpages that some of the other local jurisdictions have put up on their websites, and helping direct traffic to us and to our call number. So that's been effective as well. By far, what we've seen though, is that with this program, most people are getting information from any one of these sources, but then they're calling us and asking questions, and we're mailing them an application. So even if they may have already had an application, or they picked up a flyer, or they saw it in their bill, we're really doing a lot of communication, where we're getting phone calls, and then we're sending out, you know, regular mail, the applications. Again, it's just one page, so we're sending those out, and then they're mailing information back to us, and generally, they call and ask questions. So it's very manual, customer service-focused, but what we've seen is that that's, you know, really driven by, I think that, you know, the community here that we're trying to help. I skipped that one. That's, you know, just again, more of our outreach. We did, as Commissioner Treehouse mentioned, we had an event yesterday. COFA is a community organization that's been very active in this program and getting it passed, and they wanted to have a celebration and invite people to find out more information. So that was yesterday afternoon, and it was, you know, just another opportunity for us to help spread the word about the program and get information out to our target audience. So, to the actual implementation and where we are at, we have, as of August 2, this data is, received 369 applications. I actually think that's a pretty good number, I was looking at maybe 500 in the first couple months, so of those, we have approved 185, and then we still have quite a few in process, 173, but again, we've really been getting these in. It's been steadily increasing since we started our outreach, so I think the last week or two, we've received more than we had, you know, maybe the whole month of July. So we've been keeping up on the review, we've been getting them turned over. Our program said we would do that in 21 business days, and we've been meeting that just fine. The other statistic on here shows that we have actually denied 11 applications, and just so you can get an idea of what that is, there's a few that are really straightforward, they just didn't meet the income requirement, so, you know, they may have just misunderstood the eligibility requirements, a few that are age, so Anne was telling me, Anne Newsom, who's our program manager, was telling me that, you know, somebody that turns 65 next year, you know, we really, we could hold it, but we think that's going to be a little difficult for us to remember her birthday, so we'd prefer that she just resubmit next year. And we also had one or two where there were questions about the homeownership, and they weren't able to provide us with the information initially, but now that we've denied it, they've sent some information, and it looks like we will be able to approve those. So really, very few folks are applying that don't qualify, and I think, again, that's because most people are calling us and talking to us before they, you know, go through the effort of putting the paperwork together. So, just generally speaking, well, I think one issue that came up a few times when we talked about this was renewals. Given that we're going to be approving folks, you know, in the latter half of this year, I don't think that we need to be doing any kind of renewal in 2020, so it's really, anyone that's approved this year, we're approving through the end of 2020, and then we'll still need to really decide what we're going to do to verify the eligibility annually, but we're looking at, again, some kind of a very simple process where we'll send something out, and they just really need to, you know, verify eligibility with like a check, you know, checking something off and signing it. But we're not going to do that this year, we're going to wait until 2020. It just seems as though it would be a real administrative burden on us and on the customers that we're approving only for half of the year. We are reviewing the costs of this program, given what we're seeing in terms of people applying, and the rate reduction in terms of a revenue loss for MSD for our budget. As we had discussed previously, it was our opinion that, given the projected population and participation, that a 25% discount to this group would not likely result in any impact to the rates, and so that's, you know, we- And so that's, you know, we provided that information previously financially, but we're just going to kind of recap that and where we're at and what we're projecting for 2020. I mean, there are some costs administratively, but we don't foresee anything unless the program were to change. And so the other thing on here, just to mention, there do continue to be discussions that we, you know, we work with the county administration on and discussions about whether or not this program could be expanded, whether under the existing law or changes in the state law. And, you know, really, all we're doing right now is continuing to try to get more data to understand who is out there, the low income, the low-income seniors, low-income seniors that might not own homes but would otherwise qualify, and get a better understanding of, you know, who else we could help with this program within, you know, the existing structure of the state law. And that's really all I had in terms of an update. So I really just wanted to provide that and give you an idea again. Anyone who's been approved is receiving their discount for their August bill, for their August cycle.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think it's really helpful to have the update because we did this a while back, and it's since rolled out. And so I want to make sure that people know that they can apply now, and if they qualify, they can start getting the discount now. So it's a great program. As you said, it doesn't increase rates, which was critical to the board, but it does provide some relief to a very specific population that is generally on a fixed income and really could use the help. I do want to offer, well, one question. So my understanding is, as far as the number or the percentage of people that are applying, is it a little lower than you anticipated? Did you say that?
No, I think we, given our projections of, you know, which was difficult, we had said we felt like this could potentially be as many as 19,000 people that would be eligible under these criteria in our district. What we've seen in other communities that have similar programs is that they generally only get about 10 to 20% participation. So, you know, I would hope by the end of this year, we would be higher and closer to 1,000 to 2,000, which really would be in line with that. And then, you know, learning from our customers as to how to continue to get to more people, you know, hopefully.
Yeah, I was just curious. I know you're making a great effort to get out in the community and I'm happy to help with that, and I think we all would be in any way we can to promote the program, but I just didn't know how the numbers were lining up. And the other thing, just to follow up on a comment that you said, so this is what we are allowed to do by way of the ORC and state law. And so we have been challenged to look at modifications to expand the program, but I have asked MSD, if we are to contemplate anything like that, I would like to see kind of a lineup of, because there are like five or six different things. You mentioned one with low-income seniors who don't own homes. There are other things being contemplated. And if we were to go down that road, I want to be really clear on what the cost is as they line up, right? So not a general, if you do these five things, here's the cost, but rather the cost for this, for this, for this, so that if we were to want to do any kind of modification, we would be very clear on any kind of impact to rates. Because I'm super sensitive to not raising rates through these programs. And so I think we've asked your office to provide that information. I think it's going to be forthcoming. But I do want to emphasize that as we talk about potential modifications, we'd be vigilant about knowing what the cost would be and the impact to rates would be. So just as a heads up.
Yes, thank you. And I think we have been working on that. We have some of the data that we had already previously put together, but it would probably be helpful, and I can speak with the administration about, you know, the specific categories that we all agree is what we're looking at.
Okay, great, thank you.
Then we can do the research.
Madam President?
Yes.
Yeah, and so on your road ahead, it's obvious that you're looking at cap costs, which is great. Do you have an estimated number of how many residents were able to help with this 25% margin that we have put in? Do you have a number of how many we can help?
Our estimate was that there is about 19,000 in the, in our service area that would potentially be eligible based on the criteria that we established. That's, it was very difficult. We used a lot of different data. A lot of it was from work that Hamilton County Planning did, and then we really just tried to cross-reference that with the homestead data. We could use some help continuing to try to flesh that out a little better. And, you know, that's, some of it's on the auditor's site and auditor's information that might be worthwhile to work together on to see if we're really right. Because if we're using that as our measure, you know.
Yeah, because eligibility is a big difference of how many we can help. There may be 19,000 eligible. Can we help 19,000? Do we have enough money for 19,000? We do.
Well, yes. We did a projection that assumed all the way to 100% participation and said that that was something that we could afford in our existing budget.
Okay, great. And I just want to compliment you guys because I'm happy about the numbers as of August 2nd to have so many people that have applied and been accepted and you're in the process of. So your social media outreach and your strategies are working well, so I'm excited about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. It's been a lot of hard work by Ann Newsom and other folks in my office, so.
Sure. Yeah, we should recognize that Ann Newsom is in the audience, and you are leading the program. So thank you for your work on that.
Thank you, Ann.
All right, very good. Well, thank you. Thank you for the update, and I hope that everyone in the room will help us promote this program.
Yes, please do. And there's the information up there for everyone.
Very beneficial.
The cat phone number is 244-5101, and you can find more information on our website.
Thank you. Is it on our website as well, Jeff?
I believe so.
Yeah, I think there is a link on your website.
Okay, all right, just want to make sure. All right, very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, our next item is an update on the banks. Phil Beck and Tom Gabelman are here. This item is another update related to what's happening at the banks. There's a lot going on down at the banks. And we had an announcement, I guess it was last week, about the completion of one of the phases related to the office building going in down there, which was very exciting. But we also wanted to catch up on some of the infrastructure work that's happening in addition to the music venue update. So Tom, I guess Tom's going to take it from there. All right.
I mean, not much more to tee up than that, commissioners. I think we've, you know, just over, I think over the past couple of weeks, there's been a lot of really great announcements about some things. Like you said, the office tower. There's also been, I mean, we're at a critical juncture on a lot of different things in terms of the Phase 3B infrastructure work that's going on. We have the music venue. There's questions on the future of the banks as it relates to Hilltop and how the Bengals lease is intertwined with this. So we'd ask Tom to put together a presentation that just helps us lay out where the banks has been and where we're going on this. And I think ultimately, this is something that we don't talk enough about in terms of the, I think, the degree to which the community should be really proud of what has occurred down on the riverfront. Since 2006, we've essentially recreated the front doorstep of Hamilton County. We've raised an entire area of this county up out of the floodplain and created a new community on top of it, generating millions of investment in jobs, created a new retail, new retail and entertainment district. But again, like I said, we're at a critical juncture now. We've got the music venue, we've got Hilltop and what occurs with Hilltop, the Bengals lease, and some of those things are still questions out in the community. And I didn't want to let the pause that we now have as we deliberate on some of these questions be perceived as inaction or otherwise. So I asked Tom to put something together, just help us bring some clarity to this and charts, of course, in terms of where we're going, big picture on the banks.
Okay, great.
Great, thanks, Jeff, and thanks Denise. I think this board, probably two years ago, if you recall, when you first joined the board, talked about a decade to deliver and identified 15 high-profile iconic projects across our region that the board was committed to basically developing. What we're talking about this morning, basically, or this afternoon, is a decade, two decades of development that have occurred and the economic impact that that development has had just on the riverfront alone, which is rather striking. So when we start where we were, and this is, and we often use this, this is the riverfront back in 1997, and this depicts some of the greatest things, one of the greatest things we had to overcome in terms of our city and our region, which is back in the late 1950s, something that occurred throughout the country, is basically having highways that would bisect the cities, cities across the country, tearing up neighborhoods and often separating a city from its heritage, which in this case, Cincinnati, its heritage is very much part of the river. We had to overcome that. And you talk about moving mountains, we moved major highways and did that within a remarkable two-year period of time. The other major thing that was actually something that prevented development from occurring on a riverfront, and that was the flooding that occurred so often. And we had to come up with a sustainable design that allowed us to move forward with the development of the riverfront. And frankly, it was the county's engineering team that came up with that sustainable development. So the first time in the city's 220-year history, we now have a sustainable riverfront just from that alone. The other piece here, and this is Todd Portino, we talk about some things that you can do and some things you can't do. Back in 1998, when the county was facing a deadline, a midnight deadline that had been set by the Bengals to come up with an agreement with the city to start the redevelopment of the riverfront and acquire the land that the stadium would be located on, we had a midnight deadline, and literally Todd turned back the hands of time because we were past midnight. As a matter of fact, I think we were still at City Hall at 3:00 in the morning before we had John Shirey sign the deed over to that land, which then allowed the stadium to move forward. But that was really the, in terms of a landmark agreement between the city and the county, that's what really commenced the redevelopment of the riverfront. And as we move forward, in the first decade of development, we talk about 1998 through 2008, almost a billion dollars worth of infrastructure was put into place. That infrastructure relocated Fort Washington Way, reconnected the street grid from downtown the CBD to the riverfront, which had to occur. All that within a decade period of time. The one thing that people don't realize is the economic development and the return on investment of just that alone, in terms of Paul Brown Stadium, the arena, Great American Ballpark, and the Freedom Center annually, annually bring in over a half a billion dollars a year, just those three alone. But when you look at this photo and you look at that riverfront, we knew back in that first decade that this was not accomplishing what we all sought out to do, which is to redevelop the river, redevelop the riverfront to create a new neighborhood, and instead we have three isolated buildings, basically four with the arena, and basically a mud pit on our river. And so we had to, we had to come up with a way in which we could stimulate economic development and private investment, not just public investment. And that's what we sought out to do. In terms of the public partnership that was formed between the city and the county, which had not really existed for the previous 10 years, the city and the county came together as joint venture partners and said, we are going to do this together. Those things on the riverfront that we incur in terms of public infrastructure, we will share 50/50. All the revenues will stay in place, as we have talked about them prior to that. And we had yet another record amount of public development. Some of that, some of this you'll see here. And one of the remarkable things that came out of that, back in 2008, we did not have identifiable funding sources for the park in terms of what was anticipated. We're talking about $120 million park and probably had about $15 million in place at that point in time. And literally, within that first 10 years, we delivered a park that is now nationally recognized in terms of what it does, what it looks like, what it does, and how it's reactivated that riverfront, seven days a week. And you go down there at any point in time, it's, you know, it becomes a destination for families and for other people that are coming down, such that we have about a million people a year that come down for a park that didn't exist in 2008. We have about 6 million people that come down to the riverfront right now as it's currently built. And we're not done yet. In this first phase, which basically came out of ground, this is what we were facing when ground was broken in April of 2008. We didn't want to do it on April 1st because we were afraid of everybody, it would be one more thing for the banks. And we broke ground on April 2nd, 2008, and within three years, delivered the first phase of the park, the first phase of development. In the midst of a recession all across the country where people were pulling back on investment, in Cincinnati and Hamilton County chose to reinvest in itself and that riverfront and basically transformed it. One of the significant things about that, though, and one of the things that we wanted to talk about when you see this occur, is how it was funded. And back then, when we first started, almost 80%, almost 80% came from local funds. So the city and the county did have to take dollars out of their coffers to say, this is worthy of investment. Our riverfront is worthy of investment. But when you start looking at those percentages, in terms of state, 2% we received from the state, about 15 from federal funds. And then the funding model that we developed in 2008 with the Joint Bank Steering Committee was, had a goal of saying that banks needs to be self-sustaining. So we're going to use that development and what's built there to sustain and build future phases of public infrastructure. Because it's a daunting task for the public to invest in that infrastructure. And so that first phase, we began to use tax increment financing to fund the riverfront. With Phase 2, and again, this, keep in mind, this is still coming out of the Great Recession, we advanced the funding of Phase 2 of the development in 2009, insisted that the developer invest in a podium that would support an office building, even though the developer came and said, there's no support for office. Look at the vacancy rate, they're in excess of 22% throughout the county and the city. We insisted on that because we knew, and this board and the city had the foresight to say, it's not just about the next two years or three years. This is decades, and this is, you know, a century in the making. And as a result of that, because we had invested, the city and the county invested and insisted the developer build a podium to support an office building, we were able to attract GE and the Global Operations Center here, and timing was critical, the fact that we had started building already, we could then deliver that site to GE by October of 2016, which was one of their goals. And where did that come out in the end in terms of how we did this? Within one year of the bank's opening, so you go to 2008, we had changed the entire paradigm of how the riverfront would be funded. Now, 80% of the funds came from federal funding for Phase 2. We used stimulus funds. We used innovative financing through the Department of Transportation that frankly, they've never seen before in terms of how we funded the public infrastructure. 80% came from federal funding. The other portion that we call local funding came from the first phase of the banks, 20% from the banks. So no longer were the city and the county going to their own coffers, going to either income tax dollars or sales tax dollars, but now Phase 2 became self-sustaining. And then when you look at what's the return on investment from that, in terms of what do we bring in? Sure, we built 300 apartments and brought more residents to downtown Cincinnati and to the riverfront, but bringing GE, which, in order to do that, we had to compete against Dallas and Charleston, the entire southeast in terms of site locations. And even to bring GE back to Cincinnati, we had to compete within Cincinnati to bring them to the banks. And as a result of doing that, this is, when you talk about return on investment, there's about 30 million put in in terms of infrastructure. However, 24 million came from federal and state funds, the other six came from local funds. And when we talk about, what does that mean? For every $1 that the public put in, whether it's a local tax or federal tax, we bring in $26 in capital, $26 in capital. And those are the kind of ratios, when you go to the federal agencies and the state agencies and say, we're returning the investment back for every dollar that you put in, and we're generating jobs. And we'll talk about what that means. In terms of GE, even now, with GE having some of their, you know, resizing and so on, currently have 1,600 jobs at the banks. Those jobs are now almost, they're generating revenues that are in excess of 20% of what we projected three years ago when we first brought GE to it. We have 1,600 jobs. We anticipate another 200 jobs will be located at that center. And this just shows it in terms of the overall riverfront. And that parks, as I mentioned, it, you know, brings in over a million visitors a year. So in 2013, part of the financial modeling that we did, we were projecting about 2,000 jobs from the first two phases of the banks, based on our investment. About 2,000 jobs and about 124 million in terms of annual economic impact. And that's just not in Cincinnati, that's just not the county, but it's throughout the region. That's what we were projecting. Now we know, and the analysis that we've done, based on the, all the construction that's occurred and the development that's occurred, we have 5,000 permanent jobs at the banks and over 1.2, 1.7 billion, I'll explain that number in a second, 1.7 billion from the banks and from the stadiums and so on, as a result of that investment. And that's annually, not just a one-time, one-time occurrence. So we mentioned in the first decade of development, we had about a half a billion dollars, 552 million. When we look at the next decade of development, economic projections annually are 1.2 billion or 1.7 billion overall. Did the city and county invest in that river? Did the city and county invest in that riverfront? Absolutely. We put about 1.8 billion in the riverfront, initial capital investment. But now that returns almost a like amount, not one time, but annually, in terms of our region. The other, the other major piece, and this is, I really think that this, the joint city-county economic inclusion policy that has been developed, it's the only one that's been developed since 2008. It was adopted unanimously by both the city and the county, and it has achieved the highest returns in terms of SVE participation, minority participation, and workforce participation of any joint city-county project, you know, throughout the county. And it's, it's a model program, and frankly, it took a year to develop. And it took meetings with, throughout the community, took meetings with both the city and the county leaders to put that policy in place, and it has worked, and it's worked extremely, extremely well. And then in terms of Phase Three, and we're talking about the funding model for the current phase, that this board approved the funding for back in April, again, 100% non-local funding. So we had state funding, about, close to 22 million in state funding was brought in. We're using banks' TIF-generated funds, and we're using the county's parking revenues to do financing and developer payments. And we'll talk about developer payments because that's also part of the innovative public-private partnership model that was developed way back in 2007 and '08. It's a model that frankly, the county had never used before, a model that the city has never used before, and yet today, the city does adopt forms of that model in terms of requiring the developers. If you receive a tax abatement, if you receive certain cash assistance as you develop and as you sell and you get a certain return on your investment, some of those dollars get paid back to the public because they incented your investment. And so that's how we structured it. And that, those seeds, we planted back in 2008, are now coming forward to help fund the public infrastructure and relieve the local tax burdens, relieve the burden on the sales tax fund, relieve the burden on the city's income tax fund. We did this, we started this in 2007 and '08. We brought together almost 25 different funding sources to marshal, 25 different funding sources. You talk about cobbling funds together to do a project of this magnitude, and as a result, we've got about, close to 100 million. If I throw in the money that has been received by parks, you can add another 15 million to that number. It's 96.6 just in the last decade. And that's leadership that's occurred by the city-county project team, but it's also by the policy leaders that have the ability to advocate at the state and federal level to say, "We've got a model project here. It creates jobs, it is basically transforming a formerly blighted riverfront, and it's a model in urban redevelopment." And so when we show this, just to give you a quick summary, Phase One was built, generated about 34 million in tax increment financing that we used to fund the infrastructure for the GE garage facility and for Phase Three. And then we have additional dollars that we haven't even tapped into yet from the construction of the Lifestyle Hotel, the AC Hotel, as well as the office that we're going to talk about today as well, to fund Phase Three. And that's about 7 million that's been collected in developer payments that have gone to the city and the county, that they are reinvesting in public infrastructure. And so this, this is an innovative funding model, and we summarize this, how we, that paradigm shift that I talked about, where it was 80% locally funded, and now we've completely made it 100% non-locally funded, and the banks become self-sustaining because of that investment made early on. Phase Three was completed back in 2016, built another 700 spaces, an investment of 30 million, non-local sources. We have a proposal on the table for an $85 million mixed-use development, about 400,000 square feet. And as soon as we get this next phase underway in terms of the music venue and the next phase of Smale Park, we're going to turn 100% attention to advancing this phase of the project, to bring additional density down to the riverfront. And we definitely believe with the additional activation, that there is a demand for additional residential, as well as other retail opportunities. This shows what the next phase, and this is when you drive down on Marion Way today, you'll see the site that is depicted here, where there are about 400 surface spaces that we've taken offline. And this is the model basically for the music venue, which will have a capacity of about 4,500 on the inside for one concert, and then simultaneously, we can have a concert on the outside with a capacity of about 8,500. We do have both Mike Smith, who has MEMI here today, as well as Zach Zettler of GBBN. And what we'd like to do is, we're just, we're covering this very quickly in terms of the music venue, but we would like to come back to the board to provide a more detailed update in terms of the music venue and, and what all the programming will be. But this one is the most current animation that will show you a really good idea of how this, how this looks. And right now, we're looking at, in terms of, you know, the garage will be currently under construction, and the music venue itself will start its construction above the garage facility that the county is building in October of this year, and slated to be open in the fall of next year. And at the same time, we will also open the next phase of Smale Riverfront Park. One comment about Smale Park. This phase that you're seeing here, that will have a lawn that is twice the size of the lawn that's outside the Lagerhouse today, in terms of the timing of that development as of last year, it would have been another decade before it could be funded or financed because they were looking for federal sources to do it. As a result of some of the, again, innovative funding and financing, as a result of the CSO and MEMI coming forward and saying, "We're going to put half of the cost in to build the base park so that we have grass and trees and turf and lights and so on," we advanced that by a decade, so that by next fall, we'll have yet another new park to be added to Smale as part of that. And this is just kind of, this is the view if you're coming down Ray Street as compared to today, where it's basically overlooking the parking lot. And this is the most current animation that we have in terms of just showing you what this will look like. And there are certain lighting effects that are enhancements to what is currently being considered, but with some creative fundraising, MEMI hopes to be able to incorporate the lighting effects on all four elevations of the building, which will give it a pretty cool, pretty cool effect. Again, we're looking at, Mike, probably 175 events a year and 300,000, 350,000.
Correct.
In terms of the impact, we also want to measure what that impact is. We've got about 60 million in construction that will be underway. That generates about $100 million economic impact within one year. We're in one year of construction, and we'll have $100 million impact within the city and the county overall. In terms of the annual regional economic impact on a facility that, Mike's always a little nervous when I keep talking about his budget for it, but when we first started talking three years ago about a music venue, we were probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about $12 million in terms of its anticipated capital. We're basically north of about 24 million presently. That gives you a sense of the investment that's being made by the CSO and MEMI into making this more than just a typical concert facility. This is going to be iconic, it's going to be a landmark piece on our riverfront, and it's designed not just to attract millennials, although that's certainly a big focus of it, but it will have a diverse demographic that will be attracted to this facility and the types of shows that we can have. And they have two, you have simultaneous events inside and outside, unique in the country, quite honestly, unique in the country to do this. And so this, this little piece here that we're showing, this is the master plan that was put in place back in 2008. We're showing both the new music venue as part of the skyline, and now for the first time, we built a podium for the office and completed that back in 2011. As a result of the work over the last three years, we were able to attract one of the largest office developers in the country, Lincoln Properties, based in Dallas. They have about 82 billion under contract currently. They have 500 million square feet under management. So it's a nationally recognized developer, and they build iconic buildings all over the country and manage them extremely well. The fact that the city and the county were in a position to attract this kind of development, which will be a little bit taller than the GE Global Ops Center, it'll be about 15 stories. It will have about 370,000 square feet and some very nice high-end finishes. And it's located basically to the east of the Freedom Center. And this will give you some idea of the design elements and the advance that are designed. They're ready to start meeting with the planning commission and the building department at the city, and anticipating the summer of 2020 construction start date. And then in terms of that impact, it's about a $90 million building. It'll be completed over an 18-month period. That economic impact over that 18-month period is about 144 million within our local economy, and not too dissimilar from GE. When you take a building that has 15 stories, 300,000 net rentable square feet, on the conservative side, we're looking at about 1,400 employees. Average wages at this level would be somewhere in the range, we conservatively said 75,000, most models are probably closer to 85. But what that generates in terms of both direct and indirect jobs and the annual impact is over 700 million a year. So it's very similar to GE in that regard, but again, we kind of estimated a little bit lower to be more conservative, but it's a substantial stimulus to our local economy, given that number. And this, go back, this is where we were in '97, as of 2019, and as we continue to advance the completion of the banks, the good thing is, we still have additional phases to go and additional economic impact to generate. Mentioned about 90 million of funding the city and the county have put together over the last five, six years, 100% from other sources. And the other thing that this board did about a year ago was to take an initiative that said, "We have major taxpayer investments in Paul Brown Stadium and Great American Ballpark, each built, one in 2000, the other in 2003. We know in order to make those sustainable, we have to reinvest. We need to do certain capital repairs and maintenance. If you defer that maintenance for every dollar that you don't spend today, you're going to spend five, five years from now." And so this board took the initiative to say, "We are reinvesting. We're going to put those dollars in to make sure that we can sustain them for decades to come," and that is what has been done. And that's when we began to look at what's occurring throughout stadiums across the country and the necessity for our teams to be competitive and so on. The average cost of a new stadium, when we looked at the cost, you know, in our community back then and how we struggled as a community to fund them, well, now we're looking at 1.7 billion, which is just off the charts to build new stadiums. But we also looked at, what is the average cost of renovating as those stadiums age? And when you're looking at, you know, 10, 20, 30 years, in the analysis that we did, the average is around 160 million, with over seven of them more recently in the neighborhood of 360 million. So when we start looking about, just for example, with Paul Brown Stadium and the agreements that were just entered into with this board and with the Bengals, we looked at it and said, "Okay, through 2026, the termination of their lease, we are going to reinvest in capital, and we're going to take care of that in collaboration with the team. We're in the process of doing a stadium audit and reinvesting in those capital repairs that will ensure PBS, what happened with Riverfront Stadium, doesn't occur with PBS or with GABP." As part of that structure, as part of that structure, and the county's commitment to make those investments to preserve the integrity of Paul Brown Stadium, the Bengals eliminated the county's requirement to pay $30 million directly to the Bengals over the next nine years. That provision is gone, no longer part of that lease. In addition to that, the Bengals, under their lease entered into '97, could request enhancements, so you go beyond just basic capital repairs. All those bells and whistles that are being put in stadiums today, the Bengals could have asked for and said, "You need to do this," right? So those, which could be upwards of 150, 200 million, are deferred. They're deferred to 2024, when we can have that discussion with the Bengals in the context of a lease extension, which makes perfect sense, and it also gets us closer to the period of time when the sales tax debt is going to be paid off, and you can consider those enhancements in the context of a lease extension to preserve the stadium for decades to come. And those were agreements that were made in a collaborative fashion between the city and the county. Considerable savings to the taxpayers as a result of that, multiple millions of dollars. The other thing that the county looked at very carefully is, this bank's garage, which at the end of the day will be the largest underground garage in the country, is going to be at capacity, in terms of, it will be full. We now have two office towers that will be built down there. Those two office towers alone will have close to 3,000 employees. We, right now, we provide parking to the CBD. Eventually, the banks will be in a position where we can't provide parking to the CBD, we've got to provide it for the banks. Then you take all the events that are occurring between the ballpark, Paul Brown Stadium, the Freedom Center, the Reds Hall of Fame, and now the music venue, and we, there is a definite demand for additional parking. This board committed a year ago, had the foresight again to say, "We need to expand the development of the banks to the west. We need to continue to look at having additional parking, and we can do this in a way in which it sustains the banks, it sustains Paul Brown Stadium and what they're achieving to do." And this is just, you know, we haven't done the design yet for, basically, what I'm showing here is, oops, what we are showing is basically the Hilltop area, which is about 15 acres, and we're looking at developing that into about 1,700 parking spaces that can be used for tailgating and preserve the Bengals' tailgating experience that they've had for the last 50-plus years of the franchise, and, but we're going to do it in a different way, that looks at it and says, "We want to look at green initiatives. We'll maximize the parking, but we're also going to maximize the fan experience in the near term." And we also know that the Bengals are looking at the potential of developing an indoor practice facility, which is another trend across the NFL, which helps not only to have a facility for the team itself, but also potentially for the community. But this is something that is being advanced as well, and to the greater point, it sustains the banks in terms of its development and provides the needed parking. And so we're going to talk right now about the Hilltop campus that exists today. It's, as I mentioned, it's about 15 acres. There are two components to it. There's the concrete plant that they own and operate and have since 1941. Across the street is an asphalt plant that they don't own, but it's a major customer of theirs, it's Valley Asphalt. And what we're doing is, we're looking at relocating, and this is something, again, we probably have worked, you know, 20 years ago, we met with Hilltop to look at potentially acquiring their property as part of the riverfront development. And then when we look at the area, and, and basically, it's critically important to Hilltop, and they provide extremely competitive pricing for so many of the projects that are done throughout downtown, we looked at there are 50-plus acres that are currently city-owned or leased in part to the west of Hilltop. Hilltop looked then at relocating within an area, and what we've identified here are two sites that their campus can basically be relocated to. And right now, so that, probably the most significant thing is, Hilltop has looked at this, they've analyzed it, they've, they've determined a way in which this is feasible for their operations to continue, and they're currently working with the city to accomplish this. A portion of the, one of the sites, the one that we've identified to the north, is a nine-acre site, it's referred to as the Sixth Street Yard, that is privately owned. They also have a site that's under contract currently that is on the far western portion, which is about two acres, it's currently being used for offloading. In terms of Hilltop itself, and we'll just touch on this briefly, this is a company that has basically been involved in almost every major project throughout our region. They are a major employer with over 104 employees, generate a pretty considerable economic impact. When we talk about economic impact in the context of the banks, we often don't think of what we're doing here by relocating Hilltop away from the riverfront into the Queensgate area, that this is also a measure of economic area, that this is also a measure of economic impact within the Queensgate District as well as Lower Price Hill. I even talked to Kevin Sheehan, the president of Hilltop, yesterday, and they have, I think, 45 drivers, over 50% are minority, and they are constantly looking for new employees and aggressively looking at areas in which they can do that. Relocating closer within the industrial commercial district makes a lot of sense. And they have been meeting with both the Lower Price Hill community as a result of the efforts that both Commissioner Dreehouse has done as well as Amy Murray at City Council. And in short, just to cover this so the board is aware what is being discussed, what I've highlighted in yellow on the top there is the Sixth Street Yard, that's the nine-acre parcel, and that's where the production part of their campus would be located. And the other parcel that they have under contract, which is located adjacent to the future Price Landing Park, which has been identified by the Price Hill community as something that is very important, very near and dear to their hearts. Even though Hilltop has that under contract, they're willing to basically swap that land out for two acres over on the east side of the Mill Creek. That two-acre parcel, I'll just show you a real quick clip here of the acres that we're talking about, so you understand the land that's currently under consideration. And if you look here, this basically was used for coal offloading, last used for coal offloading back in the 1990s. There's been very, there's absolutely no investment over the last 30 years and it's not been utilized at all. So this is the land where we're showing in the lower portion here that Hilltop is willing to swap and operate their offloading operations there. And then across, directly across there is basically the west Mill Creek site that's currently being used for offloading. An absent Hilltop purchasing this plan, which they have under contract right now, from now until the end of time, that can be used for industrial offload and that's what occurred. And as you can see further to the west is the future park that the Price, the Lower Price Hill and Price Hill community has been advocating be advanced. And frankly, as a result of what we're doing here with acquiring Hilltop and having them relocate their operations, for the first time, this part of the park will have access, will have access to Price Hill, which they would have to spend close to $6 million, about $15 million budget just to get access. So we look at this land again, which is, you can see, is not utilized very much, but it is one that can be very easily converted into park space. And this is, this is something that in every proposal that the Hilltop has made to the city, they've said, "We want to deed this property to the city to be used for park purposes," because that's what the Price Hill community would like to see. And what I'm showing here, directly across, is basically the Sixth Street Yard and how that is currently being utilized. And it gives you a pretty good sense of the condition of this development, what it looks like today. I mean, and this is the kitchen of the city, while we look at it in terms of what's occurred and in its business way for decades. The interesting thing though is, what Hilltop has done is that they spent a considerable amount of time with the Price Hill community in trying to develop a new campus that would look dramatically different, not only from the typical concrete plant, but dramatically different from what currently exists in Queensgate today. And spent quite a lot of time, so what we're showing here basically is that area of Lower Price Hill being developed into a park. And then this area across, the way that I showed you is, hasn't been utilized for decades for offloading. And this shows you basically a rendering of the park and new access that would be provided on the eastern end of that area. So that's the Sixth Street Yard. And this is the design that Hilltop came up with that basically kind of dramatically changes what is occurring there. And the nice thing about this, from an environmental perspective, all of the loading of their trucks and so on would be inside a building, so they minimize dust and so on. And they're looking at enclosing the building versus having an open air. So it's a marked difference. And in terms of buffering with the community, they talked obviously a lot about landscaping and also using the building and its campus as an educational tool for the Price Hill community with Euler School located nearby. In terms of their operations impact, and when we talk about economic development, when we look at the number of employees, we look at the earnings, this is something that also is an economic development engine in and of itself. This is a very active company. You go down there, you see what they're doing every day. It generates within our community about a $52 million economic impact. And this is something that we want to keep within the city. I mean, at one point, they were certainly looking at the potential to relocate into Kentucky or areas outside of the city. It's critical, we look at it every day, that if they can supply to the projects that we're doing, we know the pricing that we're getting is extremely competitive because they're so close by and they can reduce their costs. So overall, yet another economic stimulus. Riverfront Development, what we are looking at with the phases done to date and the phases to be completed, it's about 2.5 billion annually, not one time. So that's in a quick nutshell. Maybe a little too long?
You might be overstating that a little bit.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the update. It's clarifying, it's helpful to have the history because two of us were not here for this history, so I don't want to speak for Portun. He's been here a lot longer than the rest of us, but it is helpful to have some context for kind of how this has been moving along, the joint partnership between the city and the county. And I especially am interested in how you flip the funding dynamic here, which I think is critically important to us as we sit here today, because what's driving some of the activity now is the funding. And I want to touch on it really quickly. So a couple of things, no general fund dollars are going into any of this, and I just want to highlight that, and I know that's been the case, but it continues to be the case. And so when we talk about what's happening related to the music venue, I just want to be clear, because I get a lot of questions about the timing of this.
Right.
And what's happening at the banks. And so the infrastructure work that's happening is related to parking garage and the podium.
Correct.
For the lots that will be utilized for the music venue. So that work is happening now and primarily because we need it to move as quickly as possible so that the music venue opens by fall of 2020, but also because we've got capital dollars from the state tied up in this, $12 million to be specific. And so those dollars need to be utilized for this purpose now. And so we are doing that work, we are moving forward. I've heard people say, "Oh, you know, everything's on hold." Everything is not on hold.
That's right.
And so we're working to put the infrastructure in place with the parking, put the podium out of the floodplain, as you noted.
Right.
So that we can put the development on top, all work that has to be done, no matter what goes on top of that podium, and many of us are hopeful it'll be the music venue. So then in the meantime, we need to relocate Hilltop, and you alluded to this as well. So those conversations are ongoing. I do want to say that Amy Murray, this resides in Amy Murray's committee.
Right.
Because there's an IDC, an overlay district over this property and where it might relocate to. And so Amy's committee is studying this. I've gone over to talk to her at the committee about this and about the county's perspective on trying to move this forward. So Amy and I, well, really Amy is going to hold a meeting very early September. I will be attending the meeting. It'll be open, obviously, to everyone and I'll make sure the other commissioners know about it. But it will be a meeting of her subcommittee to continue to talk about this relocation and where we are, because we have continued to talk to Lower Price Hill and to some of the business owners in Queensgate to make sure that we are doing something that everybody can get on board with. And so I know the folks from Lower Price Hill have toured Hilltop. They're very interested in that property that you referred to, the extension and really the final piece of the park, the Price Landing Park. And so we've continued to talk to those guys and so we are getting closer to a conclusion there, but we're not there yet. So there will be a public meeting early September to kind of talk through where we are with the community and with the city and the county sitting at the table. So I'm hopeful that that will advance us even further. So that's kind of the timing of this, all leading towards what we know we have to do, which is have year-round energy down on the banks.
Right.
Because if you talk to any of the retailers or any of the business folks down there, they need winter activity down there and that's what the music venue provides. And you can go up and down from the Holy Grail down to the Taste of Belgium and they'll all tell you the same thing. We're waiting on something on that site and the music venue is that thing. So anyways, I just want to clear up some of the timing questions that I know I've been asked. I know that we're all kind of being asked the same things. So that's where we sit at this moment in time. This is very helpful and I have no, I have no questions other than to thank you for the presentation and keeping us in the loop as things move forward. So with that, I'll open it up to other questions or comments.
Madam President, just a great report, a lot of hard work and a lot of great creative financing, so come a long way for sure. And I thank you, Madam President, for clarifying the music venue aspect of it, because that's not been finalized, but great work has been done and so I thank you.
Maybe just to clarify in terms of Hilltop, I think probably, and as this board is well aware, I mean, we have been working for almost three years in discussions with them in advance of anticipating a potential move and at the same time negotiating with the Bengals. The most challenging part of that is to take something that is an operation that goes year-round and has the number of employees that they do, and their ideal location right now in terms of the central city and downtown, finding a site was the most critical. That site has been identified, it is known, there's a portion that's privately owned, there's a portion that is city-owned. The portion that's city-owned is not utilized currently. There's an incredible opportunity for economic development by keeping Hilltop in the city. And we're talking about two acres that's above water for that particular location. And you plug that in with, quite honestly, by the organization of having a meeting with the Price Hill residents, which you and Amy did, Hilltop then understood the importance of the park and said, "Yes, we have this land under contract and we could offload today there. There are permits that exist there, there are easements that exist. This land across the creek, the Mill Creek, doesn't have those. But we understand what Price Hill is saying. We want to make sure, if we can get this land swap to work, it becomes a park." That's important to Hilltop to make sure that that happens. So we look at what the elements of a deal are, we have the elements of a deal present. The terms of those deals, is it a lease, is it a conveyance? Those will be worked out. But the bottom line is, you look at another perspective, Hilltop currently owns 15 acres on the Riverfront, which will be turned over to public hands, to the county, for future development of the Riverfront. Another two acres that is of prime importance to Price Hill will be turned over to the city to develop a park that, again, would otherwise not happen for decades and will be able to complete a park that probably four years ago, people shelved and said, "It can't happen." If you've got to spend $6 million just to access that park, which we heard in our meeting last week, we've now solved that issue. This is solvable and there's a deal to be made on that. The elements of the deal are present. Combine that with what they've done with the Sixth Street Yard and how they designed this concrete plant to say, "It's not going to be typical, we're not going to do the cheapest thing. We're going to design a state-of-the-art facility, a modern facility." Oh, and by the way, we want to hire employees from Price Hill and from Queensgate. And we want to conduct tours here for kids that can understand how our region is built. It should be there, it should be done.
Yeah, I didn't recognize it, but Hilltop has been very generous with their time and their energy about this relocation.
Yeah.
And so they're definitely trying to make the best of a situation where, you know, in the end, do they really want to move? I mean, it's more convenient for them to stay where they are, but they have been very good partners in this and there are some real upsides particularly for Lower Price Hill under the scenario that you lay out. And I do want to say too, that it's only because we were able to renegotiate with the Bengals that any of this is possible related to Hilltop.
That's right.
So, I mean, the Bengals have been also willing to sit at the table and figure this out, so I do want to recognize them as well. So moving forward, hopefully, we have more work to do, obviously, but we are, we are moving in the right direction. So thank you for the update. Any further comments or questions?
No comments or questions, but just as Tom indicated earlier on, as we are moving forward with Phase 3B, a resolution that's in front of the board today is a resolution approving bid packages one and two, which is trade contracts one, two, and three for auger cast piles, general trades, and concrete structure and underground utilities work for Phase 3B of the banks. So if the, these, Phil Beck is here to answer any questions if the board has any, but this allows us to continue moving forward to both stay on schedule with our state grant timelines as well as the timeline for construction of the music venue long-term. But again, this is, this is public, this is public infrastructure work. This is not private work. This is not, just so if the public is watching, this is not construction of the music venue. This is construction of the public garage infrastructure that regardless of what goes on top, needs to be constructed in order to keep moving forward with our, with the, so that we can utilize those funding sources that we have. And again, 12 million of the roughly, what is it, Tom?
30 million.
30 million dollars is state-funded, is a state capital grant to proceed with this infrastructure and we want to stay on schedule with that to make sure we don't lose those dollars. So that's why we're recommending the passage of this resolution to keep moving forward with that public infrastructure.
So very quickly then, the 12 million, you know, I want to recognize the state has been a partner in this and I know that those dollars were allocated a couple of years ago.
Correct.
And then additional dollars were allocated after that. So the state also recognized the importance of doing this infrastructure work to lift everything out of the floodplain and provide more parking. But remind us about the financial stack here. So we've got the 12 million from the state, remind us about the other.
So we have, in addition to the 12 million from the state, we have an additional 8 million that is comprised of savings on a public project, savings, you don't hear that very often, but savings on a public project and then also developer payments that we have received from the prior phases that will go into it. That then, that 8 million brings it up to around 20. We have an additional 8 to 9 million that will be financed from banks' parking revenues.
Okay.
That's the funding model.
Again, no general fund dollars, just want to repeat it. And all of the financing being utilized here has been generated at the banks.
That's right.
So we're reinvesting in ourselves at the banks, basically.
Exactly.
Okay. I just want to be real clear on the financial stack. So if there's.
Also, just very quickly, if I could, just indicate that the bids on this came in very favorably as well, came in under the engineer's estimate. So in terms of the first bid packages on this project, we're off to a good start from a financing perspective.
Great, thank you.
I think we were under about almost a million dollars on the first, so that's a good sign.
All right, before I advance this, are there any questions?
I just wanted to thank Phil Beck for coming and meeting with me yesterday to kind of answer some questions for me, so I appreciate that.
All right, I will move to approve a resolution accepting lowest and best bids for the banks, Phase 3B Public Infrastructure Development Lot 2327 Garage and Ray Street Turnaround, bid package number one and bid package number two. Michael, is that complete enough? Thank you. I will move to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, appreciate it. All right, that concludes our regular agenda. And if there's nothing else, I'm going to move that we go into executive session.
Second.
Pursuant to RC Section 121.22G4 to conduct a review, negotiations or bargaining sessions concerning employee compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.